And the meeting will please come to order. Today is Thursday, November the 18th. Just want to thank everyone who has joined us in council chambers, as well as virtually. Just as a reminder for public comment, there is a Google Form signup link in the chat for anyone who would like to give public comment. And as always, public comment will take place after non-legislative business. We're going to begin with opening prayer by Akira Granado.
Heavenly Father, we have assembled to handle the affairs of our city. As we do so, we ask for your guidance and understanding. We pray that our city reaches a place of peace and safety. Keep us out of harm's way and bless those who are in authority. Let respect be key in all our endeavors. Amen.
Amen.
This time we have the pledge allegiance.
To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Gray?
Present.
Councilwoman Darby?
Present.
Councilwoman Oliver?
Present.
Councilwoman Harley?
Present.
Councilwoman Fields?
Present.
Councilwoman McCoy? Councilman Johnson?
Here.
Councilman Field?
Present.
Councilwoman Cabrera? Councilwoman Dixon?
Present.
Councilman Spadola?
Present.
Councilwoman Walsh?
Here.
President Congo?
Here.
Eleven present and two absent.
Reading of the minutes of the previous meeting.
November 4th, 2021, City Council met a regular session with remote participation on the above date at 6:30 PM. President Ernest M. Congo, the second presiding. The opening prayer was done by Akira Granado, Deputy City Clerk. The pledge of allegiance was recited by City Council. The following members responded to the call of the roll. Councilmembers Gray, Darby, Oliver, Kita Fields, McCoy, Nathan Field, Cabrera, Dixon, Spadola,
Mr. President, I may that be known as the meeting of the, as the reading of the minutes. Let it be received, recorded, and filed and adopted by ye in a vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second that the minutes be accepted as written on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried. At this time, we have our committee reports.
November 1st, 2021, President Members of Council, City of Wilmington, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Finance and Economic Development Committee, by virtual meeting with anchor location, to whom was referred ordinance number 21-051 in title, an ordinance constituting amendment number one to the fiscal year 2022 operating budget, being an ordinance to amend substitute number one to ordinance number 21-019. Have given this ordinance careful study and recommend councilwoman on it accordingly. Respectfully submitted, those members present, Councilman Johnson, Councilwoman Harley, Councilman Field, Councilwoman Oliver, Councilman Spadola, President Congo, absent with leave, Councilwoman Walsh.
At this time, I move for the committee report to be received, recorded, and filed.
Second.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second that the committee report be received, recorded, and filed on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
November 3rd, 2021, ladies and gentlemen, we, your intergovernmental committee by virtual meeting with anchor locations, to who was referred ordinance number 21-050 in title, an ordinance to amend chapter two of the city code to require that incarcerated individuals in state of Delaware or federal correctional facilities who were city residents before incarceration be counted at their respective last known city addresses for redistricting purposes. Have given this ordinance careful study and recommend councilwoman on it accordingly. Respectfully submitted, those members present, Councilwoman Gray, Councilwoman Darby, Councilwoman Harley, President Congo, absent with leave, Councilwoman McCoy, and Councilwoman Oliver.
I move the committee report to receive, recorded, and filed.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second that the committee report be received, recorded, and filed on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried. This time we have our city treasurer's report.
November 18th, 2021, total investment $512,365,583.64. Total cash on hand, $13,194,229.04. Grand total, $525,559,812.68. Submitted by Duane Sen, City Treasurer.
Mr. President, I may the treasurer's report be received, recorded, and filed.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second that the treasurer's report be received, recorded, and filed on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. This time I accept the motion to accept all non-legislative business.
Some of.
Second.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second to accept all non-legislative business on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried. Before we get into our resolutions and recognitions, just want to acknowledge all of our recon, our sympathy resolutions from all of council. Former Governor of Delaware Ruth Ann Minner. From Councilwoman McCoy, Verdel Mary, Francisco Ramirez, and Bishop Linwood Wrightout III. And from Councilwoman Oliver, Bula Averna McManus. We have an absolute star-studded council meeting this evening. Very excited for our guests who have joined us in council. So it's good to have recognitions be done in council chambers. I want to thank them all for coming. First, we're going to start with Councilwoman Harley, recognizing our Teacher of the Year. Oh, is it?
Delaware Chamber.
Okay, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Dixon with our Teacher of the Year.
Can I have the correct pronunciation of the name so I don't mess it up, please? Joshua. Taber, okay. Thank you. I just want to make sure I didn't butcher it.
So we're going to ask Ms. Taber to come forward, please. You're going to come right to the podium to my left. Come right through the gates. And just please watch your step as you're coming up to the podium, please. So first, Councilwoman Dixon will read the resolution, then you can give comments.
Whereas it is a sense of this legislative body to honor those who have advanced the quality of life in our community while sustaining a commitment to the future of our youth, deserve the recognition and appreciation of this body, the City of Wilmington and the State of Delaware. And Joshua Traymore of Brandywine High School is Delaware's 2022 State Teacher of the Year. She is also Delaware's nominee for the National Teacher of the Year Award, which she was nominated by Governor John Carney. Joshua is earned her Bachelor of Science in Elementary and Special Education from Delaware State University, and her Master of Education in the School of Leadership and Instruction from Wilmington University. Whereas Joshua is a special education teacher, which has primary focus is ninth grade special education, English students who are transitioning to high school. Joshua's experience, the expertise is working with students and families to foster community connections between home, school, and educational agencies. In addition to serving as Brandywine's High School's Special Education Department Chair, Joshua also works as the Brandywine School District Transition Facilitator, assisting students with disabilities transition to post-secondary education and/or employment opportunities. Whereas Joshua is committed to learning relative to her students. She maintains an academic rigor while helping students to make connections to themselves, the text, and the real world. She upholds equitable educational practices while facilitating opportunities for fellow educators for foster student-centered growth. Joshua provides mentoring to new teachers in a special education in regards to compliance requirements necessary for developing individualized education program. Joshua's core belief is inclusive classrooms that erases educational barriers, embraces diversity, develops resilience in students, and fosters perseverance for students. One of her fundamental teaching principles is that children should not be compared to each other and that to do so is unfair assessment. And whereas Ms. Traymore doesn't allow COVID-19 pandemic to be a dictator while teaching her students, but instead continue to raise the bar of her effectiveness as an educator to best teach our students. She is committed to, dedicated to our youth to help them excel in their education. Now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Wilmington that this council is pleased to celebrate the work, passion, and success of Delaware's 2022 State Teacher of the Year, Joshua Traymore, for wish, we wish you the best as you continue to share your knowledge and passion that impacts our most vulnerable youth. Congratulations.
Councilwoman Oliver?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to echo what everything the Councilwoman Dixon has stated. I've been out to Brandywine High School. I've heard a lot of good things about you. And kudos to you nowadays with working under such pressure with COVID and being so dedicated to your students. I mean, congratulations. There's a lot of people that's in the field that has given up because of COVID. And, you know, good job, well done.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I would also like to just congratulate you, Joshua, for everything that you have done for our city, for your students, our students. You come from a great stock. Your family is very well-known and respected here in Wilmington and in Delaware. Looking forward to congratulating you again when you win Teacher of the Year for the whole country. But just thank you and just keep up the great work. I know you are inspiring students, but you're also inspiring other teachers as well. So, kudos and thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to take a quick moment. Is it okay if I said?
Yes.
A couple words? Okay. I wanted to thank everyone for inviting me out this evening. I thank you for having me. I really appreciate all of the council members.
I'm sorry. I don't mean to cut you off. Is anyone from your family here?
Yes, my husband Hector.
Yes, come on up. Come on up. Come on up, Mr. Taber.
I know. This is exactly what he did not.
Yeah, that's why I did it. All right, here we go.
Thank you. Okay, so as I accept the congratulations, I also want to extend the invitation to anyone who is willing and who has free time to visit your local school and just be present. The children need a presence in the school. I just wanted to let you guys know how important that is. When kids see me, they see themselves. So I would love for them to see all of you so that they can see themselves in you as well. I'm not sure if everyone is aware of how closely the success of our city is related to how well we educate our students. So I just wanted to go over a couple things really quickly. When our students see us, they see themselves, and they need to see more positive examples of themselves. We're not anomalies. We're not exclusions. We are examples that excellence is within all of us, and it's waiting to be awakened. So I think that if you guys have an opportunity to visit, you can help awaken that excellence. Who awakened you to be excellent in your community? Who is awakening them? You know, some students do not have anyone around them to exemplify that excellence that we know lives in there. So I invite you all to model what that looks like. Education is the gateway to a better community. It's the entry point to success at all levels. When we teach conflict resolution, when we address mental health and model communication skills, we significantly reduce community violence. When we teach love, empathy, and instill confidence, we develop future ideas for nonprofit organizations. When we teach health, fitness, and health and wellness, we reduce community health needs. When we teach financial literacy, we build entrepreneurship in the community and future financial investments in the City of Wilmington. All that we learn is connected to what we do. I will never give up on the greatness that I know exists in all of our children in the City of Wilmington and all over this great nation. And I know that we can awaken that excellence in our students if we are more visible for them. So I invite all of you to remember that the community needs you as well. Beyond teachers, we need people to be present in our students' lives, and I hope we continue to grow together. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we see why you won.
And you don't have to come to my school. You can go to any school that is near you because we need help everywhere. Thank you.
Congratulations again. Thank you. Is Danny Smith here? Come on up, Mrs. Smith, and I'll also bring your family too, please. So as Mrs. Smith and her family are coming forward, if any of you had the opportunity to attend the health fair that she hosted a few weeks ago, you know, that she and her team definitely deserve this recognition. It was, there was an excellent turnout. It was, it was fun. It was. A lot of times you didn't even know that we were there to, she played like tricks on her mind because we didn't even know that we were there for really like to even get like health screening and because a lot, especially men, you know, we don't want to go to the doctors and we don't want to find out some truths for our health, and she made it fun. And I really wanted to do this because going to that health fair, I found out that I had high blood pressure. And I wouldn't have found that out if I hadn't gone and if you hadn't put this health fair together. So I just wanted to thank you especially for making me be more responsible and aware of my health. And I've shared that with my friends that how important it is to, you know, to go to the doctors because, you know, we just don't, we don't do that, especially as black men. We just don't go to the doctors like we should have, and I've been extremely guilty of that. So I just wanted to thank you personally, Danny. All right, so I'm going to, I'm going to read this. And whereas in the sense of this legislative body, that those who have enhanced the quality of life in our community be recognized. Wilmington City Council would like to shine the light on the City of Wilmington's Benefits Division for outstanding work they did for the Fall Fest. One week in October each year, Fall Fest is an appreciation event for the City of Wilmington's employees and retirees. And whereas Danny Smith and her team, which includes Janesta Ray, Senior Employee Benefits Administrator, Victoria Roth, Employee Benefits Administrator, Kenyon Wilson, Retirement Specialist, and Tony, how do you pronounce Tony's last name?
Tony Sue.
Tony Sue, who is the HRIS Administrator, worked tirelessly to make Fall Fest a success. Danny has been with the city for just under four years. In 2018, she noticed that while the city has great benefits, many employees were not engaged in taking care of their health and wellness. For Danny, administering benefits was not enough just to move the dial on healthcare. So with the support of her team, Fall Fest was established. And whereas through financial support from Highmark, Danny and her team were able to hold the first Fall Fest in 2018, which included a range of healthy options, a free farmer's market, onsite massages, entertainment, free lunch, dinner, and dessert. In 2019, Fall Fest was even more successful and included a concert with Best Kept Soul. But unfortunately, due to COVID, they were not able to hold Fall Fest in 2020. But Danny and her team came back this year determined to put wellness front and center. The team decided to add a component where employees and retirees could earn raffle tickets for completing as many healthy activities as possible, such as having your blood pressure checked. The goal was to collect enough raffle tickets enabling you to shop at the prize garden. Whereas the prize garden included items like $500 gift cards, a staycation at the Hotel Dupont, and several different fitness spa packages. The team wanted to ensure that we support our small businesses in downtown. Whereas the five-day event was very successful for the medical providers and employees alike. Christiana Care spoke with 185 people regarding breast and prostate cancer. 139 blood pressures were taken and well over 100 chiropractic screenings. Henrietta Johnson Medical Center completed 50 booster shots as well as provided first and second COVID-19 shots to city employees. Fall Fest was a success and a win-win for everyone. Now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Wilmington, that this council recognizes the City of Wilmington's Benefits Division under the leadership of Human Resources Director Charlotte B. Barnes for the great work they did to make Fall Fest a total success. Dan, if you'd like to, I'm sorry, first, Councilwoman Oliver?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just would like to express everything you just said because I did attend the Fall Fest. And she did, you know, your staff, you all made it very fun. And as the president said, you was out there and you didn't realize you was getting checked. I mean, you know, it was, it was just a day of health awareness, awareness of health day, and plus the activities, and everybody was just having fun. So that was really different, and I really appreciate all the work you do. And, you know, you have assisted me personally, calling your hours and nights, asking about benefits and changing things. So thanks a lot for just taking your job, doing the extra step with your job. You know, some people, because of COVID, seem to be real lazy nowadays, but you're not.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Fields?
Yes, I'd just like to say congratulations. It's something that we, as a community, we don't do a lot, is check on, you know, check on our health. And it's just good that you, you made it fun for others. I didn't have the opportunity to attend, but for my colleagues and other people, other, because other people throughout the City of Wilmington, other employees, they really said how much they had a good time. And I do want to say thank you personally in front of everybody. When I first got on council, you helped me, like she said, night, day, in the middle of a meeting or whatever, you were, you were there. So I just congratulate you and commend you for doing such a good job, and I know you will continue to do a good job. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, Dan, if you'd like to have a few comments?
Yeah, sure. Thank you. I, this is really kind and generous of you to do. A lot of times, internal departments like Human Resources or Benefits are not recognized in this type of format. But you are employees of the city, so it is our honor and pleasure to ensure that you're participating in our events, you know what's going on. And, you know, what I firmly believe is that our employees and our retirees are your constituents as well. So what we do for them, we hope it extends to their families. We hope it extends to all the districts and communities of the City of Wilmington. So it's a pride and joy to do what we do day in and day out. And I absolutely want to thank my team. Victoria is the one that's here. We are a mighty strong team of four and a half. And without all of them, it would not have happened. So thank you so much, very much for being here, for honoring us today. It really means a lot. Thank you.
And we know, just before you go, we know that beside, oh, I'm sorry, we have a comment from Councilman Spadola.
Thank you, Council President. Just wanted to echo the comments about how great Danae personally has been in terms of, you know, my interactions with her and her entire team. So thank you, Danae, and happy to, happy to see you get honored like this. Well deserved.
All right, thank you. And we know that beside or behind every great woman is a great man. So make sure that you recognize.
Yeah, I want to thank my husband, who many of you are familiar with, and our godson, who, you know, we have to find a lot of balance in our household in order for us to be busy at the same time, busy at different times, and it's not without that. I will also take the opportunity to thank Parks and Recreation, who was absolutely tremendous in making sure that the event happened. It was a really smooth setup, and I really have to thank the Parks and Rec Department, especially the Maintenance Division, that were there onsite at 6:00 AM to make sure that we could make it happen and that Freedom Plaza stayed beautiful before and after. So yes, thank you.
Thank you. And just for the record, I think I went like 17-0 in Connect Four. Only person I didn't get to play was your husband. So we got, we got a grudge match coming up. Finally, but definitely not least, we have another recognition that Councilwoman Harley is going to read at this time. Before she does that, we want to ask everyone from the Black Chamber of Commerce to please come forward.
So while they are taking the podium, I just want to say that it is a pleasure and it is an honor for me to be able to present this recognition on behalf of Council President Congo. I've been keeping an eye on the Delaware Black Chamber of Commerce for the last year, and they are doing some amazing things.
and they are doing some amazing things here in the City of Wilmington. Ayana and her board. And I just want to say that as I have been following you, one of the latest, I guess what I would say accomplishments was when Delaware Chamber of Commerce was written up in the Washington Post. I thought that was an amazing contribution to the work that you're doing, that your board is doing. And I just want to say to you, continue being that wonderful trailblazer that you are being here in the City of Wilmington and the state of Delaware as it relates to your organization. Whereas, again, the sponsor is Council President Congo. Whereas it is the sense of this legislation body that those who have enhanced the quality of life in our community be recognized. Wilmington City Council would like to shine the light on the Delaware Black Chamber of Commerce for their vision to serve the needs of black-owned businesses by providing them with economic opportunity, enabling them to support the communities they serve. Whereas the driving force behind the Delaware Black Chamber of Commerce is the founder, President and CEO Ayana Khan, who received her Master's in Human Services Administration from Wilmington University in 2013. In 2015, Ayana started her own company, Khan Consulting LLC, that works with small businesses and nonprofit groups to help them organize and find funding through research, fundraising, and grant writing. During the height of the global COVID-19 pandemic, Ayana saw a problem that minority-owned businesses were having to close their doors at a much higher rate than other companies, which prompted her to decide to do something to help. She had an affiliation with other chambers of commerce, which gave her special insight into the challenges all businesses encounter. Minority-owned businesses were closing at an alarming rate of 41%. Ayana saw the same closing rate happening in Delaware. She reached out to the National Black Chamber of Commerce to share what she was seeing in the first state and they offered their support in the form of a chapter of her own. The Black Chamber of Commerce's main objective is to help businesses stay informed and educated regarding the systems that they need in place to qualify for bailouts. During the COVID-19 pandemic, many minority-owned businesses closed because they were not qualifying for PPP or IDEA and the American Rescue Plan funds loans that the government had put into place to help small businesses through the pandemic. While other organizations held webinars and provided educational materials, Ayana went a step further, helping her members fill out forms and guiding them through the process needed to acquire bailout assistance. She had 86 members that were previously denied to now qualify for more than $400,000. One year later, the Delaware Black Chamber of Commerce has grown its statewide chamber to more than 300 members and has opened a new office in downtown Wilmington. Now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Wilmington, that this council recognizes the Delaware Black Chamber of Commerce and Ayana Khan for her vision and steadfast commitment to small businesses in the first state and the City of Wilmington. And again, congratulations, Ayana, and to your board.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too would like to echo what Councilwoman Harley said. And it's just an honor to see y'all here tonight. And I know two of the individuals who you assisted minority businesses. I mean, it just brings me joy just to think about it because they were very upset about it and they reached out to your organization. And she texts me like three months later and said it finally went through. And I was like, who helped you? And she said your organization. So wow, just to see y'all here in person, congratulations and y'all keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Dixon.
Thank you. Well, Ayana has always been a go-getter. So I had no, no doubts that she would take Delaware Black Chamber of Commerce to the next level. So as a member as well. And just actually, we were just mentioning to her that she's helping me get some, some assistance for a Liberia project I'm working on. So I am always indebted to Ayana and always been grateful for the work that you're doing over at the Chamber. It really is changing businesses in the state of Delaware. So thank you so much.
Yeah, I just want to thank you and your team, Ayana. I think that probably one of the most amazing things about you is that you're not originally from Delaware and that you came here and you saw the need and you just stepped right in and made it happen along with your team. And you guys are absolutely everywhere helping everybody. So every time I'm on social media, I just see that where there's another event that you guys have, that you guys are promoting, another business that you're promoting. So thank you so much. Anybody that we at the, you know, City Council can help, please let us know. I'm just looking forward to you guys just growing and bringing Wilmington right along with you with that New York mentality of taking no prisoners and just, and just being kind and helping. So you are definitely appreciated. And I had to admit, when I, when I first heard that, that there was a Black Chamber of Commerce established, for something, I thought it was going to be like an older lady that would just have, somebody that would have just the wherewithal to like to do what you did. And when I talked to her on the phone, I was like, she sounds kind of young. So I'm like, how old are you? She was like, you don't ask a woman.
Right.
But just to be that, just to be as young as you are and, and to come as far as you have come so far, just props to you and kudos to you and just thank you for, again, for you and your team, just for having a vision, for coming in and doing what you have done. So thank you so much. I think, yes, time for you can, you can make some comments.
Okay. First and foremost, thank you, President Congo, and thank you to the City of Wilmington and all council members for this recognition tonight. Thank you to our board and our staff that are here tonight to support. Thank you to all 349 of our members. Those are the individuals that really make this dream work because they trusted us with their business while in a pandemic. And you know, that's a hard thing to do when you're not sure or certain what direction to go with your business. So we recognize that minority businesses in our community and in Delaware has been historically and systemically underrepresented. That's why we created a safe space of inclusion for small businesses and entrepreneurs to advance and just get the resources and the education that they need to scale and to keep their doors open and just to continue to provide for their communities and for their families. So we endeavor to create this organization to fully represent our community and our chamber represents what our community looks like. It's a, it's a place where everyone feels like they belong. Mantra is together we are stronger. And that is where the U come in. Together, we enable minority businesses to compete in Delaware. Together, we ensure that minorities and other disadvantaged entrepreneurs are not left behind due to unfair assumptions and lack of effort to help them achieve their success. So together, we provide the necessary assistance and support system and to instill a sense of pride in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to introduce your team?
So yes, we have Renee Shepherdson. And I love Renee. She's been my score mentor. I don't know, past six years. I could call Renee anytime of day or night. She's, she's been there. She's also one of our board members. We have Kiandra Parks, who is our newest, not our newest, but one of our new employees. And she's in charge of memberships, growing the memberships. She's our new membership coordinator. And then we have Jason Rodriguez, who is a small business owner as well in our community, providing insurance, which is super important for, for minority businesses. And he's also one of our board members. He's actually the board chair. I don't know if they want to say a few words. Can they say a few words?
Yes, they can. I think they can say a few words. Sure.
I just want to say thank you. That's all.
Thank you. And if you are a business owner, I have my cards in the back. Please see me because I would like to sign. Each and every one of you business owners up to become a member of the Black Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you.
Thank you. debcc.org.
And thank you again. This time we are going to move into our public comment portion of our meeting. And just as a friendly reminder, for public comment, there is a Google Form signup link in the chat for anyone who is virtual and would like to speak. I do have a timeframe of three minutes. And again, please, if you, please, if you're going to direct your comments to anyone, please only direct them to me. Also, we will have Akira keep, keep time and you will, will notice, we'll give you a friendly reminder when there are 30 seconds left on your, on the clock. First, we're going to start with our, our virtual public comments. Cora Swan, are you still with us, Cora?
Yes, I just had a question in reference to, I think on the agenda, I saw that you all was, I guess, taking out abandoned cars from different locations in the city. And I wanted to know, first of all, that was a good idea. It is a good idea. And I want to know what is going to be done by the trash and the graffiti, which seem to be a problem in the city. Thank you so much.
Okay, if you can leave your, your contact information in the chat, our staff will follow up with you.
Okay, thank you so very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll move to the community members who are in chambers with us. First, we have Deacon Earl Tate.
Greetings. My name is Deacon Earl E. Tate II. And I'm here, I'm here to, here to, again, say, say, say that I looked around the neighborhood, five-mile radius, and, and, and I still see, I still see the number of alcoholic stores, 20 or more, over, over 20 of them in the five-mile radius. But, but also, also I was counting, I was counting how many, how many youth recreation centers are, are, are we had. And I counted less than, less than, less than five. And, and the other recreation center, you need a membership, need a membership to go to them. But, but that's not right. When we was coming up, we didn't, we didn't have to worry about no membership, no nothing because, 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 because we had, we had, we had places open, open where we could go to the churches, the community centers, the schools and all. But, 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 but it's nice, it's nice to know that you're building up houses, houses all around the neighborhoods. But, but we need some place for the kids to go, go, go for recreation. I've been, I've been looking down there at, at, at a building on Vandiver Avenue. It, it, the address is 201 Vandiver Avenue. It, it's a nice building. It's a nice building. The city owns it. That would be, that would be a nice place for the open, for recreation center, for, for the kids and everything. A nice place for the, for the open where they could come and get the homework done and, and have, and have a little time for, for recreation and everything. Also, al, al, also, I, I have been, I have been consulting, taking, taking advice of plenty, plenty, plenty of the neighborhood, neighborhood folks around, around the neighborhood. And they say that we need speed bumps here in the city because, because these, a lot of, a lot of these drivers don't, don't pay no attention to the stop signs, nor the, nor the, nor the stoplights, no nothing. We need, we need something to slow them down like, like they got out in the suburb. Use 25th Street as, as an example. Lamont, Carter, Jetta. I, 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 those, I, I, those three, I, those three box, put, put up, put up, put up some speed bumps in there. It would slow them down. It would slow them down and, and it, and it would make them, make them reconsider, reconsider about, about, about what they're doing because they, because they putting most of our kids in danger. And that's, and, and the kids are supposed to be our future. But, but what future do they have? If they're gonna, if, if they're gonna end up in the hospital or, or, or in the grave? What, 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 what future? But, but that's, that's what I like to say. And I wish you all a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you. You can take. And next we're going to have Zikea Minka.
Good evening. My name is Zikea Minka and I'm President of the East Lawn Civic Association. And I come, my comments is directed toward the, the ordinance to amend Chapter 37, the city code relating to the removal of abandoned cars within the city. Now, this is special to our civic association because for years, we've been asking for help as far as, you know, get these, the cars out of the, of those backyards. But we kept getting the, the answer, it's a, it's private property. So we, there's nothing you can do about it. But it did, the number of those cars have been increasing. And for one thing, they're an eyesore and they go against our philosophy of having a, a quality, a good quality of living because they look terrible. And we know that there are dangers because of the fact that fires can start up under those cars. And if that happens, and all the, the grass that you're parked on, because some of the cars, the grass is growing up over the cars and, and all that type of thing. And so I am so appreciative. And first of all, I want to give thanks to Deputy Commissioner Boykin because he came out along with Inspector Stat. And we went through the neighborhood and, you know, we were telling them like the different things that we'd like to see done. And they gave us some really good suggestions. And but when it came to the cars, they say, there's nothing we can do about that because that's the way the law is, is written. So I'm like, well, I'm thinking to myself, well, when I was in school, they told me that no law is etched in stone. And if that is the present law, then you can make an amendment to maybe take care of the problem that you're having. So then I went, I started, you know, asking for the amendment thing. And also, my, my time is getting short. So I want to thank Congresswoman Gray for getting it on the agenda and for the first and second reading. And I also wanted to give a shout out to Councilman at Large James Spadola because he was right by my side. He came out, he took pictures, he started. he, um, started investigating through the city what can be done. And I'm telling you, it was a long list of emails that he had to go through, a lot of people that he had to contact in order to get this on this agenda. So I give a, a shout out to him, and I also thank, um, what's her name? Councilwoman Gray for, uh, making sure it got on the agenda, and that's my comments.
All right, thank you so much.
So, so listen, all of you city council people, please, please say yes. So we could get all those, all those ugly cars out of our neighborhood, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, thank you for joining us. Next, we'll have Dee Markey Hall.
Good evening, I have a message to deliver this week from Tashika Blake, Tashika Blake, who was here at the last meeting, she couldn't be here tonight. Via text, she said, yes, due to a lack of nurses during COVID, I'm unable to make it, she's a nurse. Still struggling to pay bills and get the house done before the winter, exclamation point. I need help, where is our help? I've been, I've spent over seven thousand dollars and have receipts. Insurance is covering eight hundred one dollars, which is not enough to cover anything. Where is our help in the next message? At the beginning of the, uh, the meeting, I think I heard five hundred million dollars that the city has. Cash on hand, I heard thirteen million dollars that the city has. I think there's about a hundred families or a hundred people that some were displaced from their homes, some were able to stay, some lost power, some aren't ready for the winter, some still are doing everything that it is that they can in their power. They all are doing everything that it is that they can over there to recover from this disaster without the help of the people that they've elected, the people that they're depending on right now, they're going through crisis, it's a disaster. And still, there's no declaration on disasterassistance.gov, which is where you go to find out which states have actually been declared as disaster areas and can apply for thirty-four thousand dollars. I've been saying this for three weeks now. You know, Mr. Tate comes up here every two weeks, and he talks about these speed bumps, I don't know how many years he's been coming up here, but if you don't know, he was in a terrible accident as a child. The reason why he comes up and asks for speed bumps, because he doesn't want anybody else, any other child, to go through what it is that he went through. The folks that came up here two weeks ago, the one lady from New Jersey, she said, I don't have any power when I leave here. She said she's not going to leave here. I'm not going to say that I'm not going to leave here, I'm not going to stand at this podium and protest right now. But there's something that needs to be done. We have the funds, don't we? We play that, we, we, we paid the, 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 the heat bill now, I don't have my coat up on right now, but we have the funds, don't we? We're able to take care of the people that need to be taken care of. I'm thankful that this is going to get done, that people are getting the help that they need, and that's not something I'm going to have to come up and talk about again, because I already know that's going to get taken care of, right? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Right, it's going to get taken care of.
Again, we just want to thank everyone from the community who came down to join us in council chambers and, uh, and as well as virtually. We do, really do appreciate your, your, uh, your feedback. And please continue to come down to council chambers, and if you can't make it in, in council chambers, please join us virtually to continue to engage with us on city council. And, and I will address some of the public, uh, comments during petitions and communication. At this time, we are going to move into legislative business. Want to remind everyone to please mute your phones. And those of you who, who do have legislation, to please turn down any, any background, um, any background noise. We're going to start with Councilmember Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present and call for the first and second reading.
Ordinance twenty-one zero fifty-five, Agenda zero one one one, an ordinance to amend chapter thirty-seven relating to the removal of abandoned vehicles within the city.
First reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance to amend chapter thirty-seven relating to the removal of abandoned vehicles within the city.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Was that, Mr. President, I, Mr. President, I move that that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the, um, Community Development Urban Planning Committee? Or is that the Public Safety Committee, that, I'm sorry?
Public Safety.
Be referred to the Public Safety Committee.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second that that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Public Safety Committee. Let me continue.
Uh, Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present and call for the first and second reading.
Ordinance twenty-one zero fifty-six, Agenda zero one one two, an ordinance to create a down payment and settlement assistance program.
Mr. President, I move that
First reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance to create a down payment and settlement assistance program.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Mr. President, I move that that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the, um, community, Community Development Urban Planning Committee.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second that that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Community Development and Urban Planning Committee. Any other legislation, Councilwoman Gray?
That's it, that's it, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Darby.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present and call for the third and final reading.
Ordinance twenty-one zero fifty, Agenda zero zero nine nine, an ordinance to amend chapter two of the city code to require the incarcerated individuals in the state of Delaware or federal correctional facilities who were city residents before incarceration be counted at their respective last known city addresses for redistricting purposes. Third reading of the ordinance.
Mr. President, I move that be known as the enacting clause of the ordinance and call for the yea and nay vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second that be known as the enacting clause of the ordinance and called for a yea nay vote on the question. Uh, Councilmember Darby, did you have any comments?
Um, I can open it up for anyone else and do closing comments if anyone else has any.
All right, give me one moment, please. Councilman Spadola.
Thank you, Council President, I'm happy to support this legislation. You know, counting, um, incarcerated people at, in the district where the prison is, doesn't make any sense at all. Couldn't even imagine the rationale that was used at the time, um, so this is a good way of setting that right, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Harley.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, as one of the co-sponsors, I want to say too that I'm happy to be a co-sponsor to this legislation. Um, I, I think that it was unfortunate for so many years that, um, um, those that were incarcerated were being counted in the third district. And as a result of this particular legislation, um, it is leaving a, um, a gap and a, um, large, uh, decrease in the population of the third district. And so, even though it's leaving a decrease, I think that it is definitely the right thing to do, to have people, uh, be allowed to vote, um, at the addresses where they live and not all here in the city of Wilmington be counted in the third district. So I'm really happy to support and to be a co-sponsor to this legislation, thank you.
Councilwoman Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, if I'm not a co-sponsor, I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor. This has, um, really affected, uh, the district I represent, so I'm not going to repeat what everyone said, but this is a good piece of legislation, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Johnson.
Uh, I, I would like to be added as a co-sponsor as well, um, I appreciate, um, Councilmember Darby for bringing this to everyone's attention as a way, as we're looking at redistricting, uh, we, we can impart fairness in this voting rights system. Um, this is the first step, um, many moves need to happen at the state so that incarcerated individuals can have, um, voting rights. Um, because the issue still is that, um, even when they're incarcerated, they, um, still have voting rights limited. Uh, we've made strides in Delaware, but we still have a far way to go, so, um, you know, we're trying to do what we can from the city end, and a lot of changes need to happen in Dover as well, which we hope to see in the coming years.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dixon.
Um, thank you, Mr. President, I'd just like to be added as a co-sponsor as well, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Walsh.
And I just had my question, um, are we allowed to set rules for, uh, when we take the census?
I will allow Councilwoman Darby to, uh, address that during closing, her closing comments.
Okay, I really don't know the answer to it, and, um, so I'm just very curious.
Okay, thank you. I would also like to be added as a, as a co-sponsor. And seeing no other hands raised, uh, is back, uh, to you, Councilwoman Darby.
Yes, thank you, Council President. I'm not sure, Councilwoman Walsh, if I understand your question, so I'm not sure if we're able to, if you're able to expound on the question you were asking about if we're able to make rules about the census. Based on what I'm understanding from your question is, no, we don't have no control over the census, which I think is a federal level thing. But we have control over how we do redistricting, I don't know if that answers the question.
No, because, uh, well, it, it doesn't really, my understanding is that there are certain, and I know this for a fact because I've helped folks get, get, um, absentee ballots in prison, and, um, that if you are incarcerated for certain crimes, you can still, you do still have the right to vote. And even with that, when you get out of, of, um, one of the facilities, you can always go back, you can always vote on election day, and all you have to do is use your previous address. And if you don't have identification to do that, you can always, um, cast a provisional ballot too. So
Yeah. Yeah, so this legislation is just addressing once, when someone is incarcerated, how they're counted while they're incarcerated. So currently, like, I know in the state of Delaware, I don't know what the, if that is true or not, if certain people with certain crimes can still vote. So I'm not sure, can speak on that, but from what I'm understanding, most people who are incarcerated can't vote and they're being used and counted. So that's what this, um, legislation is addressing, the voting piece is like a whole nother animal.
All right, thanks.
Yeah, so, um, I just want to say thank you to my council colleagues, the redistricting committee for being behind this piece of legislation. Um, this just came from, um, when I think about redistricting, I think of protecting, um, vulnerable communities, protecting communities of interest, and making sure that, um, even ten years from now, that people are, um, going by and using, or going by procedures or policies that make sense and that are equitable and that are fair, that are not biased, that doesn't, um, equal to like, um, buddy mandarin. So I am really interested in legislation and hoping to draft more legislation to draft what redistricting would look like in ten years. Um, and making that a better process for Wilmington, because I just believe in that everything we do, even down to redistricting and how we draw lines, will have impacts on communities for decades, for generations. And I just really think it's important that, while I'm in this seat, that I take that power to say, hey, I want to protect these communities, protect and be a voice. Um, so I just want to say thank you again, guys, for supporting the legislation. And, um, that's it for tonight, um, if we can do a roll call for a voter.
Yes, clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Field?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dixon?
Yes.
Councilman Spadola?
Yes.
Councilwoman Walsh?
Yes.
President Congo?
Yes.
Eleven yays and two absent.
Declared adopted. Any other legislation, Councilwoman Darby?
No, Council President.
Councilmember Oliver?
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Councilmember Harley?
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Councilmember Fields?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a resolution, resolution to present.
Resolution twenty-one zero fifty, Agenda zero one one three, whereas pursuant to City Charter, section eight, two oh four, every department, board, and commission may accept on behalf of the city conditional gifts of personal property and money which shall be useful in connection with the work of such department, board, or commission with authority from council so to do. And whereas Cornerstone West Community Development Corporation would like to give the city one hundred and thirty-four thousand six hundred and twenty-seven dollars and forty-five cents of new playground equipment and up to five hundred thousand dollars in funding to assist Department of Parks and Recreation's effort.
I move that this resolution be received, recorded, and filed and adopted by a yea and nay vote.
Second.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second that this resolution be received, recorded, filed, and adopted by a yea and nay vote on the question.
Um, Mr. President, um, this resolution is being presented by the administration for council review and approval. This resolution authorizes the city to accept the following gifts to assist, to assist the Department of Parks and Recreation's efforts to improve, to improve Hilton Park, one hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars and forty-five cents of new playground equipment and up to five hundred thousand dollars in funding from Cornerstone CDC West and to one hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in funding from the Newcastle County Conservation District. Um, I would definitely like to speak to this because this has been a long time coming that, um, Hilton Park has, um, gotten the money to be taken care of. I don't know if you all know, but the, um, the park is always getting flooded when it's, um, when it rains really bad. Um, the constituents in that area, they haven't had the, um, they don't, don't get to play, the kids don't get to go out there. Um, so I just really, um, would like to thank everybody for, um, working, um, with Parks and Recreation, um, and the directors before and now, uh, to get this taken care of. And my constituents are excited to have this done, and so am I. So other than that, um, can we go for the yea and nay vote?
Just want to see if any other councilmembers
I'm sorry.
That's all right, I know you're excited.
Yes, I am.
Uh, seeing no hands raised, uh, clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Field?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dixon?
Yes.
Councilman Spadola?
Yes.
Councilwoman Walsh?
Yes.
President Congo?
Yes.
Eleven yays and two absent.
Declared adopted. Any other legislation, Councilwoman?
No, Mr. President.
Councilmember Johnson?
Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present and call for the first and second reading.
Ordinance twenty-one zero fifty-seven, Agenda zero one one four, in ordinance to authorize and approve a multi-year amendment to the agreement between the city of Wilmington and Teladoc Health, Inc. for telehealth services.
First reading of the ordinance.
In ordinance to authorize and approve a multi-year amendment to the agreement between the city of Wilmington and Teladoc Health, Inc. for telehealth services.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Mr. President, I, I move that be known as the first and second reading in the ordinance and refer to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Second.
Second.
It's been properly, uh, moved in second that that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Uh, Mr. President, I have, I have another ordinance to present and call for the first and second reading.
Mr. President, I have another ordinance to present and call for the first and second reading.
Ordinance 21058, Agenda 0115. In ordinance to authorize and approve a product purchasing agreement between the city of Wilmington and Cambridge Computer Services, Inc. for a storage area network.
First reading of the ordinance.
In ordinance to authorize and approve a product purchasing agreement between the city of Wilmington and Cambridge Computer Services, Inc. for a storage area network.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Mr. President, I move that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
And finally, Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present and call for the third and final reading.
Ordinance 21051, Agenda 0101. In ordinance constituting amendment number one to the fiscal year 2022 operating budget, being in ordinance to amend substitute number one to ordinance number 21019, the reading.
Mr. President, I move that be known as enacting clause of ordinance and call for a yea and a vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that that be known as the enacting clause of the ordinance and call for a yea and a vote on the question.
This is a mid-year budget amendment specifically to address some, some issues that have arose since we passed the operating budget back in May. These were some, just some changes. Primarily it was changes to position allocations for city council and the mayor's office. Also, it revised slightly some appropriations for city council's WITN, which is our community, I guess, community news provider. So there's some changes made there. There was also an increased budget appropriations for Department of Public Works, primarily due to some ongoing litigation issues. And there also was a small, just a small budget request to the IT department as well from some emergent needs on their end. And then essentially to balance this out, again, we have to balance everything out, there was a transfer from this tax stabilization fund as well. Because we were looking to replenish the economic development fund as well, which they have a strategic reserve fund. And they presented at the Finance and Economic Development Committee meeting last month on this issue regarding the amount of small and minority business funds that have actually gone out to the door. So quite a amount of the funds have been spent down. And every few years, we replenish this so that we can have money earmarked specifically for the businesses that we just heard about with the Black Chamber of Commerce presentation. So the money will go towards assisting these businesses and helping us continue to rise out of COVID. So with these budget amendments, again, they're modest, but very important. And it really will get us to this upcoming, next fiscal year in the budget process. I believe this is a bridge that, that will make sure we get there. So welcome to entertaining any questions.
Thank you. Council, Councilman Spadola.
Thank you, Council President. I think there's a, there's a lot of things in here that are worthy. My concern, and I, you know, I've spoken with the finance chair about this, unrelated to any, anything specific, just procedurally. I mean, these are, you know, seven, eight things that are totally unrelated, yet we are voting for them in one fell swoop. You know, meanwhile, at the end of this agenda, there's two police department grants that we're, we're voting on separately. We're vetting each one individually as we should and voting on them. I feel, I feel like for, you know, any amendment moving forward, you know, we would be doing, we'd be able to do better due diligence if we could vet each change to the budget individually as a line item. And, you know, so, you know, I think it's, we're, I think it's a, it's a better way to do business. Because otherwise, this is essentially, it's written up as a consent agenda, even though there's a lot of meat here that I think should be unseparated. So just wanted to share those thoughts. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Seeing Councilwoman Dixon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Also would just ask the chair that as we are working, as the, the funds are being transferred from, for the Economic Development Strategic Fund, that we help them figure out how to grow their population so that funding goes more to MBEs, which are minority business enterprises, because they are at a smaller amount in comparison to our larger other institutions like Navient. So I just want to make sure that we are also growing our population at the same time so that they can also take advantage of what the Economic Development Strategic Fund has available. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no more questions from council. Clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilwoman Gray.
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby.
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Field.
Yes.
Councilwoman Dixon.
Yes.
Councilman Spadola.
Yes.
Councilwoman Walsh.
Yes.
President Congo.
Yes.
Eleven yeas and two absent.
Declared adopted.
Thank you very much, Council President.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Field. Councilmember Dixon.
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Councilmember Spadola.
Nothing tonight, Council President.
Councilmember Walsh.
Yes, Mr. President, I have three resolutions.
Resolution 21046, Agenda 0103. Whereas pursuant to Section 2363 of the city code, the council deemed it necessary and proper to specify the requirements for review and approval of city sponsored grant applications and proposals, including authorization for expedite.
Mr. President, I move that be known as reading of the resolution, that it be received, recorded and filed and adopted by a yea and a vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that that resolution be received, recorded, filed and adopted by a yea and a vote. On the question.
Mr. President, this is a $419,000 grant that the department is applying for. It's to fund without any matching funds to combat violent crime. I would like to point out to council members, whom I am sure already know this, but especially members of the public, we cannot accept this grant and use it to pay for other things. This money has to be used for what they are making the application for. So it's easy to come up here and say, well, you're just getting this money now. You can take 500,000 or 200,000 out and put this towards this item. No, we cannot do that. So with that, as I said, no matching funds. If anybody has any questions, I'll answer them or try to anyway.
Yes, Council, Councilwoman Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I've been looking over the resolutions and the resolutions are simply authorizing the police department to apply for grants. This is good for the taxpayers and is responsible, so it doesn't fall back on the taxpayers. It's just allowing the police departments to apply for grants. So I will be supporting these. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Johnson.
This is a, this, this grant request did initially give me heartburn as I did have specific questions about overtime and the way police was combating violent crime. To the police department's credit, they did answer some of the questions that we had as council. Again, I think Councilmember Walsh put it correctly. We are kind of stuck with these, this free money out there that if we don't get it, then it'll go to another jurisdiction. So for that, I do support this with the caveat that, you know, I wish there were other grants. There's a lot other needs we have specifically on policing alternatives and mental health treatment that we could use in the city. So I really implored the department and we, on council, I know several of my colleagues are trying to work with the department to find grants in that avenue. So we're not always funding the same programs. But that's a talk for another day and definitely will be discussed in this year's budget season.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to compliment Chief Tracy. He sent a very comprehensive response to all of our questions that we had at last council meeting. And I am going to support this because it is basically free money from the feds. And he did justify spending a lot of it on overtime. But as Councilman Johnson said, I really wish someone in the department would start trying to find grants that would help a different, a different way of policing, more of a social aspect to the police. And I know the grants are out there, we just need someone to look at them. But I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm not going to belabor the point, but I, it's just very frustrating being a part of a council for years now and that has constantly asked the police department to search and look for grants that speak to some of this very same things that some of my colleagues just talked to, talked about, but it never happens. And I'm not sure how it will ever happen if, if we just keep going along to, to get along and we keep doing everything for them, but they never do anything for the, I'm not going to say they, they don't do anything for the community, but they're not listening to the, the community's requests. So I'm not going to support this. Hopefully, one day, we can be unified and strong enough as a, as a council and as a community to make our demands at this time, at this point, relevant, relevant to the, to our, to our police department. Because they haven't, they haven't heard, all of our requests constantly fall on deaf ears. But again, I'm not going to, I've said this before, so I'm not going to keep saying the same thing. But just want to give you all some background why I'm not going to support it. Councilwoman Darby.
Yes, thank you, Council President. Well, I'm going to beat the dead horse. So I am not in support of this legislation. The police department does not need any more money from a grant, from a budget. They do not need to be funded. They're already funded enough. Overtime increases racial bias in their ability to respond. So overtime is not a great thing for departments when they're already having issues with how they respond to black and brown people in the Wilmington neighborhoods. I believe in police reform. The police department is not willing to have that conversation. We're hoping that they're just going to, one day, just start looking for grants that's around social service and they're not going to do that. So at some point, you have to take the stand and you have to say, no, I am not going to get, go along with the get along just because this is what council has been doing for decades, for years, just saying yes to the police department. We have to put a demand on them and say that we will not say yes on anything else until you do have police reform, until you change the way that you're treating people in our neighborhoods. So I'm voting no to this. They do not need any more money. Actually, a lot of their money needs to be reallocated to social services, mental health, homelessness. They need to be addressing issues like that. And more policing does not reduce gun violence. That's already a proven stat and statistics with data that more policing does not reduce gun violence in any way. So we're giving money for calls that we're not going to see a difference in. We're in one of the deadliest years of gun violence. However, you will hear our police department say that they have already made reforms and they changed this and changed that, but the real reform has not happened. Thank you.
Councilwoman Fields.
I'd just like to say I do support this. I have to agree with my colleague, Mr. Johnson and, I mean, Councilman Johnson and Councilwoman Oliver and everyone else that is, that is in support of this. It's free money. And I, and I get it, you know, we definitely need to have that conversation and this is a different council. So we can't continue to talk about what the past council's done and what they have it and how they haven't communicated with the police chief. I think it's now a new council and we all have the ability to speak up. And I think he will listen. So I'm, I'm for this and I hope that we can have this conversation. And we're not going to continue to say that he's not. We just have to make sure that we knock on the door and make sure that he answers it and he hears what we're trying to say as far as council, because it is important that our community is protected one way or another. And here, this is, this is free money, why not take it? That's still what we need to do. Like you said, you can't beat a dead horse, but you can't take, you can take the horse to the water, but you can't make it drink either. So at the end of the day, I'd just like to say I support this piece of legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Harley.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So one of, we all know that as legislators that we do have the power of the pen. But I also believe that it's about building relationships and partnerships as it relates to how we need to communicate and for those things that we as a legislative body would like to see happen. Are there some things that we have asked for that has not happened? I agree they have not happened, but I have also seen where we have been moving the needle by asking for different requests. And I do see a change slowly, but surely. And, and what I, I have to say is that I agree with Councilmember Fields in terms of, we, we still need to run and maintain the city as we are waiting for changes to take place. So we do have the power of the pen. And as we are waiting for our chief and those in, in, in his department to respond to us, I believe we have a responsibility to make sure that this city is safe. I think we have a responsibility to make sure that we're doing everything that we can as legislators to, to fund. And as we continue to put our requests out there. So I just want to say that let's continue. I don't want to use the word pressure, but we, we can continue the conversation and, and we can work together with WPD, with our chief to get those answers. So just because we haven't received them, that doesn't mean that we have to give up. It doesn't mean that we have to stop asking, because we're not. We're going to continue to ask. So while we are going to continue to ask, we want to continue to make sure that they are funded to, to continue to do, to do their best. So I'm going to support this legislation for those reasons, because we are going to continue to ask and we are going to continue to expect the chief to, to bring about some of those changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Johnson.
Just, just a brief final remark is, and again, I echo the sentiments of many of my colleagues. This puts us in a hard position as council. And I agree with my colleagues who are dissatisfied with the change. But I think we have to look back. We have made a lot of changes, you know, from body cameras to policing oversights coming. There have been a lot of changes in policing. So I don't want the public to think that there are no changes. Change doesn't happen as fast as we would like, doesn't happen as fast as I would like or any of us, I think, would like, but it's happening. And I think the crucial thing where if we look from a fiscal perspective is that they have a staffing shortage right now with the department. People don't want to apply to be officers and as well as other employers, they're not able to attract talent. So that's a real problem. And I, I agree with Councilmember Darby and we don't want burnout of the officers. So we need to find a way to attract and have an apartment where the culture fits our city. So we're continuing to work on this in this year's budget cycle. We're having those conversations right now. So I, I invite the public to become engaged. If you have policing alternatives or other programs we can do, you know, we need those proposals because we are looking at them as well as looking at ARP and everything else. So we are hard at work and, but we, in the meantime, we need to make sure our city's safe. Bottom line is every neighborhood, we're going through a gun crisis right now. So that is why, again, I think this is from the standpoint, we have no choice but to support this. Thank you.
Seeing no other questions from council members, back to Councilwoman Walsh.
I'll, I'll just ask for a roll call, please.
Clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilwoman Gray.
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby.
Nope.
Councilwoman Oliver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Field.
Yes.
Councilwoman Dixon.
Yes.
Councilman Spadola.
Yes.
Councilwoman Walsh.
Yes.
President Congo.
No.
Nine yeas, two nays and two absent.
Declared adopted.
Thank you all. Mr. President, I have another resolution to present.
Resolution 21046. Resolution twenty-one zero forty-seven, Agenda zero-one-zero-four. Whereas pursuant to Section two-three-six-three of the City Code, the council deemed it necessary and proper to specify the requirements for review and approval of city-sponsored grant applications and proposals, including authorization for expedited grant application when necessary.
Mr. President, I move this resolution to be received, reported, and filed and adopted by a yeay vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. This resolution be received, recorded, filed, and adopted by a yeay vote on the question?
Mr. President, this is for two-hundred-and-nineteen thousand, really almost two-hundred-and-twenty thousand. Um, these grant funds, again, uh, new requiring funds from us um, are used to cover the salary for a civilian cold case investigator and overtime cost and part of overall violent crime reduction efforts. This comes through the Burn Criminal Justice Innovation Program.
I see no questions from council members. Clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby?
No.
Councilwoman Oliver?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Field?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dixon?
Yes.
Councilman Spadola?
Yes.
Councilwoman Walsh?
Yes.
President Congo?
No.
Nine yeas, two nays, and two absent.
Declared adopted. Councilwoman Walsh, any more legislation?
Yes, I'm sorry. I have one more resolution.
Resolution twenty-one zero fifty-one, Agenda zero-one-zero-five. Whereas pursuant to Section two-three-six-three of the City Code, the council deemed it necessary and proper to specify the requirements for review and approval of city-sponsored grant.
Mr. President, I move this be known as the reading of that resolution. That'd be received, recorded, and filed and adopted by a yeay vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that, that resolution be received, recorded, filed, and adopted by a yeay vote on the question?
Mr. President, this is an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar grant request. Um, without matching funds, this were two additional personnel for the department's Victim Services Unit and to support local, local efforts around violence reduction undertaken by the police department. So eight-hundred thousand for victim services and other purchases.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no questions from council members. Clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby?
No.
Councilwoman Oliver?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Field?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dixon?
Yes.
Councilman Spadola?
Yes.
Councilwoman Walsh? Councilwoman Walsh?
Yes.
Thank you. President Congo?
No.
Nine yeas, two nays, and two absent.
Declared adopted.
Thank you, Mr. President. That's all the resolutions I have and thank you everyone for your votes this evening.
Okay, thank you. This time we'll move to petitions and communications. Councilwoman Gray?
Um, nothing this evening except I'm wishing everyone, uh, Happy Thanksgiving. I hope that you can get together with your loved ones, whether remotely or together, but be safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Darby?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Yeah, same here. Um, Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Happy Turkey Day. Happy Indigenous People Day. And, um, also making sure if you have any families who are in need of turkeys or dinners, um, please reach out to the council office. I'm not sure what the phone number is, but, uh, someone probably can share that. But reach out, email me, um, and I'm able to connect you to some resources to get some food for the holidays. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Oliver?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, would like to announce, uh, um, I'm in partnership with Lieutenant Governor Bethany Hallon with Kingswood. Tomorrow, we will be giving out, um, donating two-hundred-and-fifty turkeys to the residents, uh, over Eleventh Street Bridge that were affected by Hurricane Ida. Um, also, um, the, I'd like to congratulate or, um, thank the High Risers. Um, I let Michelle Ollie get into that about, um, my brother's turkey drive for the High Risers. But I'd like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and a nice holiday. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Harley?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I want to, um, thank those that, uh, were available to, uh, help me along with the Blue Codes to invite, uh, seventy-five youth and their families from the East Side and South Bridge to, um, the Blue Codes Showcase Cup Homeowner Game, um, which was a couple of weeks ago at the Chase Fieldhouse. Um, we had a great time. It was an opportunity for us to create a space for open dialogue and the opportunity for us to bond together while enjoying, um, the game with our families. And again, um, we had, uh, seventy-five youth and families from the East Side and South Bridge and that was huge. Um, the kids really enjoyed themselves and, um, even the parents. So we are looking forward to doing that again. And, um, I want to thank the Trinity Vicinity Neighborhood Association for demonstrating pride in their community by coming together as well, um, doing a fall cleanup um, with family and friends. And after the cleanup of many, 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 many leaves, um, at the end, we were able to get together and to do a cookout. And then lastly, I want to, um, share that myself along with County Executive Matt Meyer, we're going to be hosting a turkey giveaway at Bethel Villa. This is my second year hosting the turkey giveaway at Bethel Villa at five-oh-six East Fifth Street. Um, that's gonna take place on Monday, um, November the twenty-second from ten to twelve. And the thing that I want to share with the community that although the turkeys are for the residents, the families with children, we also are going to be doing a COVID vaccination and COVID-nineteen testing. So if you are in that neighborhood on the East Side and you want to come and get, uh, vaccinated or get your COVID, um, nineteen testing, we're gonna be there from ten to twelve. And if you would like to, um, pre-register by letting me know that you're coming for COVID vaccination and testing, you can reach out to me on, um, email, uh, which is M H Harley at Wilmington D E dot gov. Again, it's M H Harley at Wilmington D E dot gov. And I'm going to render a minute back to Councilmember Oliver to talk about the turkey giveaway um, that's gonna take place at the High Rises, um, by Norman Oliver.
Thank you, um, Councilwoman Harley. Um, I'm sorry, the twenty-second, uh, Stormin's Turkey Giveaway. They will be attending all the High Rises and due to COVID, they're not able to congregate in the lobby. So the manager at the High Rises will have the gift cards and they have signed up. And, but he does have someone who will call and make sure the seniors get their gift cards for their turkeys. Um, and that would be Harley, um, um, Compton, the
Windsor.
Windsor.
Sacred Heart.
That's what I was saying, because y'all know the High.
Quaker Hill.
Quaker Hill. So all the High Rises, um, they will be receiving their gift cards on the twenty-second. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the actual turkey drive is on the twenty-third?
Right.
Twenty-third, right? Just want to make sure we give it the right dates.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, no problem. Thank you. Were you, were you finished, Councilwoman Harley?
And lastly, I just want to say to, um, the East Side community that I'm really, um, happy that the Christina School District, they, um, adhere to my request to have the, um, public meetings for the New Bancroft Campus the same time every month. When they started, um, these meetings, they were scattered from this week to next week and people just was not aware of when they were having the meetings. So I do want to thank the Christina School District for adhering to that request by having the New Bancroft um, public meetings every third Tuesday of the month from five-thirty to six-thirty. Uh, they will not be having the meeting in December. It's gonna pick up in January twenty-twenty-two. And again, it's gonna be the third Tuesday of every month from five-thirty to six-thirty. And they will be sharing all the different updates regarding the New Bancroft, uh, campus. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Fields?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Um, on November the twenty-third, um, the City of Wilmington is in partnership with Amazon Black Employee Network B N M T N one and P H L one. They have a turkey, they're gonna have a turkey giveaway at the, uh, William Hicks Anderson Community Center. Um, it's on November the twenty-third from one PM to three PM. What they have to, they had to register in person, um, by November the eighteenth. Um, however, um, please just give them a call, um, if you're still in need and see, um, if they're, if they're still accepting people. I know they said while supplies last, limited to two-hundred-and-fifty people. However, if you happen to miss that one, um, reach Gospel Hot, um, Radio, um, eighty-nine-point-one FM. They're giving away turkeys on, um, except, um, I'm sorry, on Saturday, November the twentieth, beginning at, um, twelve noon at William Hicks Anderson Community Center, five-oh-one North Madison Street. Um, it's all free. They're gonna give a coat giveaway. They have hundreds of bags of free groceries, turkey vouchers for the, um, for Thanksgiving turkey, Christian hip-hop artist Kyle Alexander, um, the community partners specializing in mentoring, tutoring, grief counseling, job development and information, health and wellness, pandemic food distribution, prayer ministry tent. So if you miss any of those, if you miss any of the other, um, turkey drives or anything like that, please feel free to stop by William Hicks Anderson Community Center on, uh, Saturday at twelve noon. I will be there along with everyone else. So I hope that, um, you know, I hope that we can get some families there that are in need. Also, I'm gonna ask my council members on West Center, West Center City, um, Adult Center is having their lunch in November the twenty-fourth at the William Hicks Anderson Community Center from eleven AM to two PM. And I just kind of want to show, um, show them some love. Um, they're always down there. They're playing bingo and different things like that. So I just thought a friendly face from their, um, you know, from, from the representative throughout the city. Because they come from all over the city to come to the, to come to, uh, West Center City Adult Center. So if you don't mind joining me, um, just give me a call and I'll be there. Um, and you know, I always have my quote. A thankful heart is not only the greatest ve- venture, but the parent of all of the ventures. Um, I just want to say Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Please enjoy your family. Please enjoy your time off. God bless you and thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Johnson?
Uh, good, good evening, everyone. Um, just to first start off, uh, of course, I wish everyone a, uh, self, a safe and healthy Thanksgiving, um, as we do have to be very vigilant. Um, COVID is actually on the uptick right now already. Um, so if you have not been vaccinated, please get vaccinated. Or if it's been more than six months, um, depending on the type of vaccine you have, please get the booster as well. Um, I recently got the booster myself. It's quick and painless, um, and something that everyone should do. Um, so please go ahead and, um, try to engage and, and go to the health clinics. Um, this upcoming Monday, there's a West Side Family Health. There's actually two clinics in the city. So there's one from nine AM to eleven AM and, and the North Side on Sixteenth Street. And then in the afternoon, the evening from one PM to seven-thirty PM, um, at West Side Health on Fourth Street, there will be a vaccine clinic. Um, you can, uh, walk into Welcome, but you certainly can pre-register with West Side Health. So please, 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 um, especially during this time as, as COVID's on the uptick again, please get your vaccine. Also coming up on Saturday, uh, November twenty-seventh, which I believe is a special day for, for two people in council. Brief hiatus due to COVID, um, City Council will, will be there as well. Um, it'll be beginning at eleven AM on Marcus Street. So, um, I don't have all the full details, but I know, um, stuff will be coming out next week or so. But it is back. So it'll be great to see everyone out there, um, especially kids. Um, and last but not least, uh, I, I am receipt of some information, um, some questions about the water moratorium. Um, this is in, in going with our water program. Um, because obviously if we lose, uh, revenue with the city, uh, they built into the budget, then we have to detract this somewhere else and cut city services. Um, so I, I have, I am a receipt of it as I believe my colleagues are as well. Um, but it's, uh, water shut offs is something, of course, the city continues to look at different programs so that folks don't get their water shut off. So, uh, more to come, of course, from the Finance Committee, but I just wanted to let you know, uh, that, that is something that council is, is, uh, looking at. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Field?
Thanks for another good meeting, President Congo, and I, I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dixon?
Sorry. Um, uh, I just had one thing that I'm gonna yield some time to, uh, Councilman Fields because she missed, uh, a couple of her announcements. Um, just that Hemingway at Johnson Medical Center, um, in the South Bridge location will have a turkey drive um, this Saturday, November twentieth from eleven AM to one.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dixon. Um, also, this is just a FYI, um, event. UFCW Local Twenty-seven Vaccination Event is November the twentieth at the U A W Hall, six-ninety-eight South Old Baltimore Pike, Newark, Delaware, from nine AM to twelve PM. And my
Councilman Spadola?
Nothing tonight, Council President. Just everybody have a safe and enjoyable, uh, Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Council, Councilwoman Walsh?
Um, I would just like to remind everybody that the conversation that we're going to have with the police department is going to be on the thirtieth. So it's not just for the Public Safety Committee. It's for everybody. Um, there will be rules and time limits and stuff like that. So it just doesn't go on for seven or eight hours, even though I'm sure it could. Um, but to keep that date in mind, um, I'd like to wish to everyone a happy Thanksgiving. You know, there's so many people in town that really don't have the resources right now to be able to make contributions to various charities and events that are going on. But what we all usually do have is an extra place at our table. So if you do have a neighbor that you don't see getting a lot of company or one who just seems a bit lonely, um, if you can't, if you don't feel good about inviting them into your home to have a meal with you, then put a plate together and bring it down to their house. But I wish everybody a happy and a safe Thanksgiving. This is the second highest, um, automobile fatality date after Mother's Day. That's when more people are on the road than not. So take it easy if you're traveling to see friends or family and, uh, just stay safe. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Again, I'd just like to thank everyone who joined us in council chambers and also, uh, virtually. We, uh, really appreciate your engagement. Please continue to, uh, to do so. Just want, I, I want to address a couple, um, statements that were made during public comment. Mr. Tate has been coming to council meetings, um, religiously for years and, uh, DeMarkey was absolutely correct. And I had that same, I had that same feeling this weekend. I reached, I reached out to our Chief of Staff, um, that we really did need, do need to do a better job of responding to, um, to our constituents when they do come up for a public comment, either with a phone call or, or an email. Cause, um, you know, for him to be coming, he's been coming and asking about speed bumps before DeMarkey is probably even aware of. So, uh, we are going to, on behalf of, uh, Deacon Tate, uh, council will ask our Department of Public Works to do a study on the feasibility of speed bumps. I know that there was always conversation around, uh, we couldn't have them because of, uh, fire trucks. But we just want to make sure that we are, um, doing our due diligence, um, and just responding to our constituents because he does have a very, uh, legitimate concern. He also talked about, uh, community centers and the lack of community centers in our city. There are, there are definitely, um, outlets for, for children and young adults to participate in. And on, for our City Council, I just want to, um, thank our, our staff and I T for putting it, uh, together on our website. Families and, and children can go, uh, to go find different outlets for children, whether it's community centers or nonprofits, um, church events. If you go to Wilmington um church events. If you go to WilmingtonCityCouncil.com, you will be able to find um different outlets uh for our youth to participate in. And if you do have um an organization, a nonprofit or a church that's doing something that's uh youth-related, uh you you're able to go to our website and upload your information and that on our website will be up uh it will be updated peri- periodically. Uh that is a concern that of of many of our constituents that there is not enough for our children to do, but their access is a little easier here on city council. So I just want to thank our staff uh for putting that together. Uh what else? And and we and we talked about, DeMar Key also talked about uh the need of our constituents um who were uh part of the uh the hurricane and who were flooded. And a lot of us gave our time and money and donations and we and some of us, some of us are still doing so. But I think as a council, we really do need to kind of put our thoughts together and see how we can um provide additional help to those uh you know, to our constituents and to our friends and our neighbors who are uh still being affected. Uh I think that's really important, that they know that at least we're trying on their behalf. And if we are already trying, that we can uh respond in ways that we are doing, um that we are advocating for them. But I think but I think that is important, that 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 information um be shared with them. Um also to um uh Ms. uh Zakiya who came and uh was very appreciative uh appreciative of uh the legislation that's coming forward uh around um abandoned cars. Just want to let her know that I'm sure she is well aware, but to the public that you know, once we have our committee meetings, there can be a mu- there can be much more dialogue uh with council members and with departments from the administration on uh how to you know, how we can we can make that legislation um a reality and how we can tweak it if if necessary. So I want to make sure that our our constituents know not only about our our council meetings every first and third Thursdays, but also about our committee meetings. We're we're really able to have real dialogue with each other and real public comment. We can have conversations about upcoming legislation. So please go to our uh city council website at WilmingtonCityCouncil.com and uh just to find out how you can be a part of those committee meetings. Um and also you can always call us at our office at three-oh-two-five-seven-six-two-one-fourty. Again, our number is, I'm sorry, five-seven-one-two-one-fourty, three-oh-two-five-seven-one-two-one-fourty. Five-seven-six, I'm thinking about my my job, sorry, my other job. Five-seven-six-two-one-fourty. Three-oh-two-five-seven-six-two-one-four-zero. You can reach any of your council members uh with that with our main through our main office number. Again, it's five-seven-six-two-one-fourty. Um I think that might be everything. Again, I want to thank my colleagues for another great meeting. Want to wish everyone happy holidays. Uh please be careful. I had no idea that Thanksgiving uh was was um such a dangerous time to drive, as Councilwoman Walsh brought to our attention. Uh so please be careful. As Councilmember Johnson said, that COVID mentioned that COVID is still among us. I know everyone wants to wants to get together for the holidays, but please just use caution. We don't want to get anyone sick, especially our uh our elderly. And with that, I will accept the motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
I want to favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any any opposed? Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.